October 7th, so I'll call to order the City of North St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Lisa, do you want to take the role?
Yes. Elaine Barton?
Here.
Patrick Bleeze is in attendance.
Here.
I zoom.
In Zoom.
Eric Brenner?
Here.
Rick Gelbman?
Here.
John Mungy?
Here.
Lisa Wong?
Here.
Andrew Weiss?
Here.
And Alan Worm is absent tonight.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum. So first item is to adopt the agenda. One quick change, if I could, and that is we have meeting open to the public way down at number 12. Could we move that up to item five before public hearings, which we don't have anyway? Just to clarify, is that just another one of those format?
It is, and we actually worked on those today to get the templates updated.
Good. Okay, thanks. So any other changes, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Adopt.
Motion by John, second by Rick. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The voice from above.
Yeah, and he is kind of hovering over us, too. All right, then we have the approval of the September 16 meeting minutes. Anybody have any corrections, changes to those?
I have a correction on page oh, four of seven. The third paragraph of public hearings, the fourth line where it begins completely screened from adjacent screens. I believe the second word, screens, is not the word intended. I thought maybe it meant streets.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'll make sure that that gets corrected.
Thanks, Patrick. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Moved.
Moved by Andrew?
Second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose none? All right, we've got the minutes approved. Then on to meeting open to the public. So if there's anyone here who would like to present something to the Planning Commission that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Just please give your name and address for the record.
John Schmall, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. Excuse me, I've got bad. The question as to not on the agenda is anything that is, you know, there are things to be commented on, errors and whatnot, but public is prohibited from bringing things up like that because the agenda is set and it's on the agenda? Just, I've been doing this for years, but I've never read that before. You cannot comment on or bring up anything that's on the agenda. Is there a definition of that?
If you, if you want to comment on one of the things that we'll be discussing?
Yes.
I think you've done that before, and we haven't had, you know, certainly stopped you, I don't think.
True, but, you know, I've read it for the first time closely. That's not on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the council allows people to, rather than having them come up during this period, they say, well, have a special period for you. And I guess they can do that.
Yeah.
They can do anything they want to.
I think it'd go either way.
So I will be able then to comment on, depending on the way you want to, when it was presented, either the capital improvement project, or as stated in the council workshop of 10-5, the capital improvement plan. Which one is it?
It's the capital improvement plan that we're...
Okay, so the council on 10-5 got it correct because it says "plan" on...
Well, they might have been talking about the project as well.
No, that's on this page.
Okay.
So, and on the, just to confuse the issue even more, that on the, oh, I've got too many papers. On the council workshop of 9-821, it was the capital improvement project. So, well, you make it up as you go along, I guess.
Let me just say, if you want to make your comments now, you...
I intend to.
Yeah, okay.
I intend to. I want to get out of here.
Okay.
I've had enough of these meetings. So, a subject can be brought up on the capital improvement project or plan, whatever you want to call it. And my particular interest is the, an item under building and facility improvements, specifically the community center, that great white elephant that sits down the road from here. And on 9-8, there was magic performed in the planning for repairs. There would be an infusion of cash in the amount of $650,000, the source of which will be, according to the 9-8 workshop, the solid waste transfer. Now, that would be one of the enterprise funds. And what the solid waste fund has to do with the community center is beyond me. But we all know from the history of going to council meetings and following this government, that those, what do they call them, enterprise funds, have been used as cash cows. This building got some money from the electric fund. The community center got money from the electric fund. The fiber-optic fund got money from the electric fund. And a lot of it was put to a stop when Moody's said, knock it off, or we're going to kill your bond rating. And so that was cut back. But it seems like it likes, wants to pop up again in transferring funds from the solid waste fund. And again, the solid, you know, many of the enterprise funds have to have a backup because they have to replace infrastructure. So why this fund became so cash-heavy is beyond me because there's no infrastructure in the solid waste operation. We don't have trucks. We don't have anything. It's a contractor. So why it got that big was because of the way the building is set up, that the city does it, they charge an amount, and the hauler charges an amount. And there is a cushion, and it's been a good cushion. And it's, I don't know how big it is, but they're willing to take out $650,000 to fix the fine community center. It is, I don't know why the people don't rise up and say, hey, you know, if you're going to fund something, bring it out in public and make it part of the taxes that you pay, and say, and it's going to be part of the levy, and not build up in silence these funds in order to tap them later on. All this money is ours, the residents. We've paid too much for solid waste charges on our bills, and this thing has been built up. And nobody says anything about, well, maybe we ought to share some of this with lower rates in the future for our trash pickup. But any, so there is, you know, what I believe is, and I don't know if you have power over even to consider what I said, because what would you consider, what are you considering in passing this? All these figures are smoke and mirrors because who knows what's going to happen 10 years from now, or basically nine years from now, 21, 2029. And it could be nothing, like happened to myself, who is a resident on Chisholm Avenue, that was supposed to be fixed in 2019, a full reconstruct. But after waiting 10 years for it to happen, it was planned, they said, oops, there's no money. So it never happened. Now it's going to be in 2029, and I have a good feeling I'm not going to be around. The odds are against me to see this happen. So, but again, do you consider any of the figures that are stated on these multitudes of pages? Is that within your purview?
Well, I think we'll, once we get to that issue, which obviously is next, then it'll kind of be explained what the role of the Planning Commission is. But exactly where the funds come from is the council's decision, obviously. Ours is primarily focused with whether it's the plan itself and the projects on the plan, which is a plan only, are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the goals, and what we think supposedly is going to happen between now and 2030. That's about the best I can explain it briefly, but I think probably Eric will be giving the, like, the introduction. But as far as the actual, here's where the money should come from, and here's how you should operate your finances, is not under our purview.
Okay, so...
But appreciate the input.
Well, I hope the council appreciates the input at the next council meeting that I will attend. Because I've watched this enterprise fund baloney go on for so many years, that this money magically, it's kind of like, for the citizens, it's like, they're going to, they're going to get it out of my hide somehow. Whether they do it upfront or they do it, where did that money come from, it's going to be done. It's kind of like the frog in the pot. If you do it slowly, you turn the heat up, poor frog doesn't know he's going to get cooked. But if it's boiling and you throw it in, yeah, he knows what's going to happen.
Appreciate the input, John, but like I say, we don't make the, certainly don't make the financial decisions.
Well, I would also say that you would not say that a street shouldn't be repaired or whatever that's in this plan.
Some of it has to do with priorities, as far as our role. And this, again, you know, this is a plan that is not set in stone. So as we all know, priorities can change. But again, rather than belabor that point, we probably should just get right...
Well, I will now listen as to the input by the assembled judgment crowd here as to what they say about this plan.
Thank you.
I'll go into learn. Thank you.
Okay. There's nobody else in the audience. Do we have anybody on Zoom other than Patrick? Or on the phone or anything?
[inaudible]
No?
[inaudible]
Okay. All righty, then we'll move on to, we don't have public hearings, so we'll move on to the business action items. And the first item is to review the 2022 to 2031 capital improvement plan. Eric, are you going to start it off?
I'm going to start it off just long enough to introduce Morgan Dowley, the city engineer, who will provide this presentation. Chair Barton, I would say that you, your statement of the Planning Commission's role was very succinct and accurate, but I'll turn it over to Morgan Dowley to walk through the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So before you again here, I've done this before, and passed capital improvement plans in terms of just a broad overview of what is being considered for adoption by the city council. And when, a little bit of background, as Eric said, and Chair Barton had mentioned, so the Planning Commission's role is not one that is comprehensive with respect to funding, or funding amounts, or funding sources of the capital improvement plan. But again, being able to comment or review and maybe guide staff where appropriate with respect to the, with reference to the comprehensive plan. So the projects, project areas that have been identified by staff, those are primarily done based, in terms of capital reinvestment within the community and infrastructure improvements, those are primarily identified based on need and other priorities. Development associated with some of the adjacent infrastructure is also another driver. But this opportunity here for staff to have this open discussion with the Planning Commission allows the commission to be able to ask questions, certainly of staff, and probably give some input as to things that staff needs to be aware of or look at with respect to what the Planning Commission feels is important in terms of conformance of the capital improvement projects that are included within the plan and how they might relate to the comprehensive plan. So if that provides enough kind of backdrop, what I would propose to do is to share with you, these are two slides within your packet. They're both maps. One of them, which I believe is the first of the two maps, is simply an indication on the map of what's identified or on the docket for 2022. So that's for next year. So that's kind of the more imminent project discussion. There's another map that shows a little bit more long range. I think it goes through maybe 2029, even though the stated actual capital improvement plan, as drafted by the finance director, goes through 2031. That next map does provide a little bit of context in terms of where we may be going after next year. As Chair Barton mentioned, I certainly think it's important to note that any plan is subject to change. They're never written on stone tablets. The finance director, his intention has communicated to me and other staff, and I think the council as well, is that we will, moving forward, have a regular reexamination and re-adoption of this capital improvement plan as a comprehensive document, financial document for the city, something new that has not been quite so formally handled in North St. Paul. So it's a positive, and it'll provide more looks by the public, more input by the public, more input by the Planning Commission moving forward, right? So you, I think I've maybe been in front of the Planning Commission twice before in this similar situation, so it'll be more of an annual thing, I think, is what we can expect moving forward. Time of year TBD, but once it gets set on a regular schedule, it'll probably be similar timeframe each year as the city staff and city council move through the budgeting and capital improvement plan updating process as a regular cycle. So, back to the two maps. If you direct your attention to the 2022 project location map, which is the one that is just two colors. There's like a dark blue color and a pink color. The first really broad comment I would make from a city engineering staff standpoint to the Planning Commission is that in large part, these street improvement project areas are pavement preservation in nature, meaning that we are either proposing to do a mill and overlay, which is kind of, you take the top off the pavement, and then you repave the top of the pavement to have a fresh top coat, but it's not fully replacing all of the pavement. Or we do a reclamation where we grind up all of the existing pavement, but we don't really go down all the way to correct all of the issues underground within that roadway section. We don't replace all of the curb and gutter. We don't do everything, which you may have potentially lived through or been familiar with in 2014, 2016, 2018, and 19. Some of those other projects were more invasive, more of a full reconstruction of the roadway area. But also, that is, when you get to a full reconstruct, that's when the city starts to look at a full reset. And if we're going to touch all aspects of the infrastructure within the right-of-way, how can we reimagine that corridor? And the comprehensive plan really becomes an important bible at that point, where we refer to it. And if the comprehensive plan is saying, this is our vision for this street corridor for the future, then that's what we will propose to the city council, or some version of that at that time. Now, back to the pavement preservation projects, or mill and overlays, or reclamation, we're really kind of just working within the curb lines. We're not going too much outside of that. So it's just a different character type of project that I want to call out for the commission. And I'll go through these areas in quick succession just to call them out specifically. Did you have a question?
Well, like with ours on 2596 POP, I mean, that was, was that in the plan? I wasn't here at that time, but we had water main break four times over one winter. So I would assume you had to juggle something where we talk about to be determined and need, that things will be switched around for that. Isn't that correct?
Correct. And that's a good example of the flexibility of a capital improvement plan. So that area was always planned, and I don't know if the year was exactly the same, but there were some modifications to the streets that were all ultimately included and authorized by the council as an end result project, right? So the capital improvement plan or the street improvement plan was a guide. It was something that gave the public and staff and council and commissions an understanding of generally where we are going from one place to the next. But they do get modified as time goes on. And as you heard from the public as well, too, on the interlude, that sometimes things get pushed off or reprioritized, that sort of thing. That's common.
Because all of a sudden, we lost water four times over a winter because pipes get busted and had to dig it up earlier. So...
That is a common reprioritization thing, our water main breaks, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's kind of where I was getting at, is sometimes things have to move just because people don't have water.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I mentioned, there's two different colors. And at the southern end of the city, there's a couple of street segments that are indicated in pink, which is called, according to the map key, maintenance overlays by Public Works. So that's something that actually that even the city engineer doesn't have any involvement in, is that is true street maintenance. It's a very less invasive version of an overlay project where, let's see, we've conducted it most recently adjacent to, like, Richardson Elementary on 15th Avenue, 15th Avenue west of McKnight and Spirit Drive, if you've been through those areas. So it's more of a maintenance activity by Public Works. We include it here because it is an investment, a capital reinvestment, to a certain extent in our streets. And so Public Works does use, they do use these maps to plan out how many streets can they get done in a specific year with their budget, et cetera, et cetera. So we're not really doing much, other than just re-topping the road with asphalt in those areas. And the other areas, I'm going to break it into four different, five different projects, if you will. And starting on the westernmost area there, highlighted in that navy blue color, is Ariel Street, between the cul-de-sac just north of Highway 36 up to 17th Avenue. And then some streets also to the east from there, 13th and 14th, and Flanders. I think that Spirit Hills Drive is another little connecting road in there. Really, that project started with early discussions with the City of Maplewood. Maplewood had already, in their CIP, identified Ariel Street as something that they wanted to do with their program. But we own that, own that street 50/50 with the City of Maplewood. So staff was in some discussions with them, actually late last year and through the winter. And then as we kind of moved into this year, staff had discussed the idea of a joint project with North St. Paul and Maplewood, with Maplewood leading the project, and we would supply some resources with respect to how we want our streets to be improved, which would be similar, but we have our standards. Maplewood has their standards. So that's that first project area that would be, that has been authorized for staff to work on for next year. There will be a formal joint powers agreement executed with the City of Maplewood. Usually, we do that around January with these types of projects. We've done them before on roads where we own them 50/50 with Maplewood, so we'll do a similar deal there. That is planned to be a reclamation on Ariel and a mill and overlay on 13th and 14th and Flanders at this point. So the pavement is going to be fully replaced on Ariel, but we'll keep most of the curb where we can. We won't be doing any significant widening or changing of configuration or any improvements like that, because it's more of a pavement project for that project area. Moving over to the area by the high school, which is the next navy blue area east from that first project that we just discussed, that's on Third, excuse me, Third Street, Second Street, and 10th Avenue, just west of the high school. So that's an area that, as you may recall, North High School is subject to receiving a bit of an upgrade from Independent School District 622 in the next year. They just went through their approvals process not too long ago. They have not been issued a building permit yet, so we're still waiting for some things from them to come through on that. But we anticipate that they'll start work next year, or next spring, something like that. And we do have, again, some more bad water main in the area and some completely shot roadways. And so the idea is to try to combine some of the improvements that they're doing with some of our infrastructure that really needs attention in and around that area. So we're going to replace the water main, and again, do some reclamation of the roadway. And those roads do not have concrete curb and gutter, but we'd be adding that. And I don't know if that's explicitly stated in the comp plan, but I think upgrading roads to concrete curb and gutter, you know, a full urban section, when it doesn't currently have it right now, and we're going to spend some money on it, that that would be in conformance with kind of past practice and the goals and objectives of being able to move stormwater around more efficiently with curb and gutter, that sort of thing, right? Moving south across Highway 36 from that area to the downtown area, there are two project areas. One of them is just west on 7th Avenue from the concrete paving and the work that was just done and completed adjacent to the uptown Commons Development Area on Margaret and 7th Avenue. So this would be generally between First Street and Helen on 7th Avenue, and Helen itself, I think, on both sides of 7th Avenue, from Sepulvede down to the first alleyway just south of 7th Avenue. A little bit of alley work as well, too, adjacent to that, just since we're going to be in the area, if we can improve those alleys and get them up to new pavement standards as well, too. That would be the idea. So that would be a continuation of some of the concrete pavement replacement, some of the streetscape ideas. There's no significant impetus right now to significantly change the parking arrangements. On the eastern end of this project area, it will continue the diagonal parking down. And on the western area, which is more of a transitional piece of 7th Avenue, there's on-street parallel parking, but not angled parking. And the city just recently invested a fair amount of money on new irrigation, new boulevard trees, and new sod in that First Street to Helen block of 7th Avenue. And so, you know, if we were to change to diagonal parking through there, for example, we would start to take out things that were just recently put in from an aesthetic streetscape standpoint. So we want to be respectful of that. So no significant width or alignment changes, but also new pavement and full reconstruction of the sidewalks. And where, I guess, I think a part of, or at least an appendix or reference within the comp plan is the downtown revitalization plan, which is kind of just that entire corridor of 7th Avenue from McKnight Road to Century Avenue. And so we'll be using that as a guiding document or guiding plan for the design, just like we did with that piece that was just completed one block to the east. And then the next project is down 7th Avenue just to the east. It's basically centered around the surface parking lot, which I'm calling the Sixth Avenue Surface Parking Lot, for lack of an official name. If Planning Commission has any suggestions on what to name that parking lot, staff will certainly take them. But that is the parking lot that's immediately south of K&amp;J Catering, or the old K&amp;J catering spot. Fairly large parking lot with, I don't know exactly how many parking stalls, but a reasonable number that, through evaluation of the pavement, the drainage is also not in good shape through there. But also, from a maintenance standpoint, that is a difficult parking lot for Public Works to stay on top of with respect to mowing grass in all the little tiny islands, and also removing snow out of that parking lot with respect to all the little tiny islands. So a minor modification to some of the layout is anticipated. We think we can actually add some parking stalls. We think we can actually add some parking stalls with, um, with some reconfiguration, not significant change. But the alley on the south side and the angled alley on the north side would also be improved as well, too. And then Sixth Avenue out to Charles and then Charles North and South would also be repaved. But those were on Public Works's, um, maintenance overlay list. So we just kind of put those together so that they would be bid out together. We might get a little bit better pricing potentially by doing it that way. That was Public Works's ask anyway, so maybe makes their list a little bit more easy to deal with. So those are the majority of the projects. There's going to be some sanitary sewer lining, which, uh, is just all underground and doesn't really impact anything other than, uh, that does actually, um, factor into our comprehensive sewer plan in terms of addressing, uh, inflow and infiltration, which is a, an issue problem with our sanitary sewer pipes. So lining and rehabilitating our sanitary sewer pipes on a regular basis, which is something we've been doing for the last ten years as budget allows, is important and is in the plan and is something on an ongoing basis where we invest where we can. So we will be doing that, uh, this year as well, in and around several of these same areas. And then there's one navy blue arrow pointing off to the north on McKnight Road. Don't know if, if the commission knows this, but we do have a fairly large area of our water distribution network that extends north of North St. Paul into Maplewood, so we serve some Maplewood residents with our water. Uh, and on McKnight Road, Ramsey County has let us know that they plan to overlay that road in twenty-twenty. Well, they said twenty-twenty-two, we asked them for one more year so we could prepare for this. So that's going to be in twenty-twenty-three. And we do have some water main breaks in McKnight Road on that north-south piece that they plan to overlay. So rather than put that county investment in new pavement on the county road at risk, like if there's a water main break, we got to dig it up, you know how that goes. So we want to get in there, replace that main line with all new pipe, and then they can come in after us and overlay it. So that may happen in twenty-twenty-two, or we could do it in twenty-twenty-three earlier in the year, just before Ramsey County comes through. But we wanted to, uh, potentially work on that all at the same time, so we're ready in case they wanted to move a little bit more aggressively with their schedule, which is slightly out of our control. But so far, they're, they're being good to work with. So that's the summary of all the projects. I won't go into them, but that next other map does show a longer range, um, roadmap. It includes some of those projects that have been pushed off in priority, like the Casey Lake area that was mentioned earlier. So that's still in that long-range street improvement plan, it's just been moved forward, uh, based on priority, not based on budget. And with that, I'll stand for any questions that the, the commission might have.
Well, let me do a quick one, just while I have it in my mind. And that has to do with the parking lot, because as I recall, I remember the Capitol Cooper plan that was adopted in twenty-thirteen, I think it was, that's the date. That's when my street was, in twenty-thirty something. And I don't recall, but I didn't see through the whole thing, that parking lots were addressed, were they in that plan? I thought it was all streets, which, I mean, this is good to do.
Yep. Yeah, Chair Barton, members of the commission, no, that's, that's accurate. So at that time, um, we started working on that original capital improvement plan or street improvement plan in two thousand eleven. And the focus was streets. Uh, and we had, uh, some big issues to address in terms of how to prioritize and tackle some of, uh, what we were dealing with from a street and alley standpoint. So parking lots were not included. We did at that time, or the staff at that time felt it was important that we provided some direction in terms of even those longer range, like thirty years out and forty years out. That's not the approach we're using right now, but, um, it is healthy, I think, to include, you know, pavement as an asset, even if it's a parking lot versus a road, is an important consideration. You know, Public Works spends money on maintaining it, snow plowing, et cetera. And so, um, there has been some discussion about this lot, uh, and other city parking lots over the years. But so this will be the first time that we've included it.
Well, I missed, I didn't mention it because at least in, certainly in the downtown area, which our parking lots really are, they are in horrible. This is not the only one. Back to me is one of those areas where as we talk about upgrading the downtown, as we get to residence and it's hopefully we can get more new businesses, that, that it looks, that is usable. It looks good and it's usable and you don't have to worry about breaking a leg or an arm when you try to improve.
Right. And I can, I can share that staff feels there's a, a good opportunity to, um, make improvements to the electrical system within the parking lot as well, too. Electrical director has talked about, uh, I think, using grant funds, installation of, uh, electric vehicle charging stations within this lot as well, too. The lighting is in bad shape, so that would all be redone. So I, there's, you know, it's not just on the pavement side, but in conjunction with some other, uh, city infrastructure upgrades, with the development right across the street to the, to the west. And I think that was one of the feelings in terms of prioritization. Also being able to, you know, knowing that we're going to have some, uh, additional retail in that area, uh, potentially. And hopefully, you know, some revitalization in the downtown commercial retail area as well, too. So that, you know, that surface parking is going to be, uh, important to be in good shape and ready for the next twenty-five years.
Anybody else, I still have some comments, but anybody else, anything on the line real quickly?
I was just kind of thinking about, um, how it plays into alternative modes of transportation, like pedestrian or sidewalks.
This particular plan, and I'll just stick to the two projects, is, is that okay? So, um, right now, the, uh, if you want to call it multimodal approach, right? Most of the opportunities there lie on, uh, the Seventh Avenue portion of the project. Uh, so we do have, uh, transit route on Seventh Avenue. I believe we still do, I think we lost a stop here or there, but there still is a route in the area. And so that would be maintained, uh, you know, those stops, uh, and routes are modified, sometimes without the city being notified, but that's by metro transit, um, and, uh, based on ridership, basically. And so if the public is ever wondering why sometimes a stop gets moved or, or changed by metro transit, a lot of times it's because they have data to show that nobody is using that location. But so that's from a mass transit standpoint, that's one aspect. From a pedestrian standpoint, uh, certainly sidewalks will be a part of that downtown area. Certainly, um, ADA in the parking lot will be important. Certainly ADA on-street will be important as well, too, for those, those, um, parking areas identified within the right-of-way. There is no plan, I guess, just to be transparent, there hasn't been in the past and no plan now for like addition of like an on-street bike lane or something like that on Seventh Avenue. I think that, you know, Seventh Avenue or the, the route downtown, um, has been talked about in the past with the gateway trail right there and with some on-off points not too far away. I think the general consensus within the community, at least not having driven hard towards bike lanes in the time that I've been at the city, has been that, um, shared use where appropriate on the road and access to the gateway trail is a regional kind of amenity, uh, very close to downtown is important to maintain. But on-street, on-street bike lanes, uh, got some discussion on the downtown revitalization plan, but did, were not implemented or not required to be implemented. So we've been, again, using that as a guiding document. Some, someone might ask that, what about bike lanes? So that's, I'm just providing that context, how we got here without those. No, um, and I don't think that's identified within the comp plan or in the county's active living plan. But Sepulvede actually is a, an evolving adjacent to Seventh Avenue corridor, meaning it was one-way just up until last year or two years ago. And now it's two-way and it's functioning a little bit more like, uh, an intelligent reliever, I guess, of, of traffic downtown and potentially pedestrian traffic, too. I don't know about bikes, but, um, when you look at a map, I guess, when I look at a map from a transportation planning standpoint and I see the gateway trail here and then I see Sepulvede not too far away, it's important to consider how each one is going to function, right? So going long distances without frequent stops, that's more appropriate to gateway. If somebody were to walk or to bike on Sepulvede or even Seventh Avenue, that means you're kind of, you, you must have a destination in and around that downtown area that's maybe a block or a couple of blocks away or a portion of the city away, not necessarily long distances, right? So they, they might function differently. I haven't personally looked at bike lanes on Sepulvede, but it's a pretty narrow road. Remember that, um, I think we just barely put two, two directions of traffic in there. Absolutely.
Well, and the, the downtown revitalization plan can, or, excuse me, the redevelopment master plan is the one that, um, kind of envisions the potential of using Sepulvede as more of a bike-friendly, pedestrian-friendly environment. I think once it was changed to two-way, that made that more difficult because it is quite narrow and people park behind the buildings, like at the food shelf and so forth, and they park any direction they want.
Right.
Because it's, they're used to driving a certain way. And it, there's not a lot of room there, but I do think it's one of those corridors that really does need to be looked at because the parking there is also poor and people do have to cross that, that street. Now a two-way street to get to.
Which makes it more of a barrier.
Yes.
Yeah, and we're just going to get into that, uh, process here with the downtown plan, right? And so, um, as I said, evolving, that doesn't mean that it's done evolving either, right? So that, that vision can be revisited and recreated to, you know, potentially even, um, prohibit vehicular traffic and make it more of a
Plaza.
Bike and walking plaza, yeah.
When I first moved here, it was two-way.
Yeah.
And it went one.
Why did they go to one-way and why did they go back to two-way? Does anybody know?
Park, was it trucks, or what was it?
I think it had something to do with the post office.
Was it?
Okay, I think, but before my time and
Yeah, I can't remember the reason now.
I was just kind of curious now why it went back.
So why it went back is when we were down, we were talking about the construction and what to do for an entire year of disruption and not, I'm not saying the car show would move on to Sepulvede, but all of those things were kind of on the table. And There's no plans to switch it back right now. The, uh, and specifically, the mailboxes were moved, uh, to accommodate kind of a, a different pickup drop-off area, so. Yeah, I, I would agree. But I think it's going to be important for the Joint EDA Planning Commission, um, Task Force to take a hard look at that. See what's in the existing plan. Does that make sense for the future, you know, looking out twenty, thirty years? Or is, does that need to be modified? I think that's going to be something to kind of, to document for the future and provide that guidance for the future.
Could I ask a question, too? Then I just was looking at some of the numbers and just paging through. And when I was looking at parking lots, because again, I just am so not happy with our parking situation. And I noticed that the range in target replacement years, I, I just would like some explanation, pretty simple one, because I'm not an engineer, of why they vary from ten to fifteen to, I think, the longest is twenty-five.
Twenty-five years?
Mm-hmm.
What page are you on?
I'm on page ten, I think. Let me put my glasses on. Ten, pretty good. Yeah, twenty-five is the Seventh and Margaret parking lot. Or is that because of the surface? No, it still would be twenty-five years, no matter. Well, maybe there's a explanation that I don't
Well, without trying to read exactly every sentence and comma and period, I guess, that you're looking at, what I can say is that, um, the timeframes are set approximately, and this is more for budgeting purposes. So there is not some hard science or qualitative reason why twenty-twenty-five would have been picked for a specific year or not, right?
No, no, I'm talking about the, the life of the improvement, I guess. I think that's the column I'm looking at, what is, have to put my glasses on again. Target replace cycle years column. And that ranges from ten to twenty-five.
Sound like an overlay compared to a
Yeah.
Is that what you're
Page twenty-one of the packet.
Oh, maybe it is in the packet. I'm looking at all these little spreadsheets.
Twenty-one of the packet, uh, is that in the finance director's section? Okay.
But that only, the only reason I was asking, because that kind of gets at the prioritization issue, you know.
Yeah. So what I can tell you is that different types of improvements are going to have different life cycle. I did not, I don't want to misrepresent for the finance director, but I didn't write this section. And he certainly has familiar with asset management as well, too. But, you know, so, for example, an overlay improvement on a roadway might have somewhere between a ten and a twenty-year life, life cycle. That's just average, expected, you know, different communities are going to be different, different cities, different soil corrections. Our different soil conditions are going to be different. An overlay in Arizona is going to last a lot longer than an overlay in Minnesota, right? Like, that's just our lot in life from a, from a climate standpoint. And a full reconstruct, I mean, with ongoing regular maintenance, that should be like a fifty, sixty, seventy-year improvement. And that means that you're staying on top of ceiling cracks and doing an overlay every ten to fifteen years, um, to get to that point, right? So, uh, it just, the level of financial investment does increase the life expectancy and sometimes there's a sweet spot in there. Generally, you don't want to be reinvesting capital dollars in something too soon, like too expensively too soon. So you want to make those, uh, like a reconstruct improvement to a road at the right time as opposed to reconstructing it when you could get by with an overlay or a rehabilitation, like we talked about with some of those other projects.
So some of those detailed figures, you don't necessarily know exactly.
And they're not exact. And that's why we do evaluate our pavement condition, because we might think it's going to be fifteen years to the next overlay, but maybe that's built on some really poor soils that used to be a swamp back in the day and we're only going to get ten years out of it. And so we, we don't want to let it go too long, because then we missed our window for an overlay and we've got to build, do a reconstruct for much more money, because we missed that opportunity to stay on top of it.
Just one other piece of input, I want to pick up on something that Lisa mentioned, and that has to do with the multimodal, or pedestrian, bike. And that has to do with trails. I noticed that the trail life expectancy, if you could put it that way, is ten years. It kind of surprised me, because I thought, gee, that seems kind of short.
Well, so that, that's for, so what we've been doing is overlaying our trails most recently. So what you saw up by Silver Lake Park, that was an overlay, um, oh, I think every bit of asphalt trail got overlaid in
And that's okay.
Twenty-nineteen.
That
And that would be about right, about a ten-year timeframe, maybe a little more.
I guess the point that, that I was going to make is that some of these, so often we talk about sidewalks and not everything needs to be a sidewalk when we talk about providing for pedestrians and certainly for bicycles. And I do know that in some of the improvements we've made recently, just to provide the, the accessible route to something, we've used, um, concrete. And when a path doesn't require that, and I was wondering, is there a reason that we've done that? Other, I, I could not think of one, because
With respect to accessible routes?
Traffic other than
Yeah. So, so it's pretty, uh, common to refer to a trail as something like an asphalt, maybe multipurpose thing that people might walk on or ride bikes on.
Right.
It's pretty common to refer as something that's made out of concrete as a sidewalk.
Right.
Those are pretty general terms. You can have asphalt sidewalks and you can have concrete trails. There's really no reason to do one or the other, right? And so a lot of it has to do with the context in which you're designing. If you're in a corridor that, uh, has some trees and a park-like setting, it might lend itself to what, what classically people might refer to as a trail, which is asphalt, generally that makes sense, it's easier to construct that way, et cetera. If you're in an urban setting with curb and gutter and not too far away from the road, and let's say that the grades are very important, then concrete is probably your better bet. And grades are important with ADA. And so it's very hard to hold an asphalt contractor to line and grade for something within one percent tolerance. And when ADA says that your cross slope can be no greater than two-point-zero-zero percent cross slope, that's something you can count on a contract, a concrete contractor for, but it's really tough for an asphalt contractor to be able to meet that in every situation. So that's why you might go one way or the other, but there's So that's why you might go one way or the other, but there's no rules, and you could go either direction.
Well, as I was kinda checking around today, I was just looking at various things and maybe, 'cause I was headed up to the new restaurant, Brothers up there on Henry, and I drove past it because the parking lot was full, which was good. And I noticed how horrible the Henry Street Trail is. And when we look at priorities, I know that we prioritize streets, and I know that, why we do that, because, you know, people use them, more people drive than walk, let's face it. But by the same token, we've got a new Suite Living facility right across the street, and there's nothing to say they wouldn't use potentially the trail if it weren't. I mean, it's got grass growing through it, it's just in terrible shape, and that's one of the, the ways to get to the gateway. So to me, it's like that whole prioritization is, I just don't want us to lose sight of the other transportation element, which is biking and walking. So that was really what I kinda noticed, there was just very, and I, I know this probably isn't complete even, 'cause it can't, it's probably not all our needs, but by the same token, there's very little attention paid to developing any new trails, and that's been on the agenda since the last comprehensive plan, to do that, take advantage of the gateway, particularly now that we've got more things happening in the city. And I, I hate to see us lose that opportunity by just focusing our efforts on one area. Not that we are, but I think it's easy to lose sight of the fact that we also somehow wanna work that in when the opportunity's there. So that really was what I kinda took away from it as reading through it, thinking, I understand the street emphasis, but
That may be an opportunity.
For too long, we've forgotten.
And we're talking about new trails that don't currently exist, right?
It, well, additional trails or connecting.
Right.
Something that we start, that was started somewhere to an endpoint. Yeah. And that's true with our sidewalk system as well, is we tend to, you know, we have these portions of sidewalk, and then they don't go anywhere. And that is a big piece of the comprehensive plan. If you read the comprehensive plan, it's all over the place, virtually every chapter.
You guys worked hard on that section, I remember.
So that was really what I kinda, when I was looking at it, I was, I actually looked to the trail section, and there was no, nothing there, and I thought, wait a minute, we've been trying to do this for a long time. So anyway.
And I think from the council's perspective, I think, you know, there's a lot of, there's been discussion about sidewalks and including pedestrian ways, particularly sidewalks. So I, I think that it's a good direction.
Like, we'll get there.
In something, you know, to include in the
Yeah, and so when I, when we introduce this item, when it comes before council, I'll, I'll make that comment, that we heard that from the commission. And as the finance director is committed, you know, this'll be an annual update. We'll see if, you know, maybe we can find some opportunities to work that in, even if it's a small project occasionally, maybe not every year, but you know, that's something that if budget allows and if it makes sense, then that's certainly something that staff can take a look at.
Well, and I'd also recommend, and this is specific really to parks, because I know in some cases, you're, I understand what you're saying regarding using concrete instead of asphalt, but there might be, when we lead into a park, once you get in and people can get to the various amenities, if it's possible to use asphalt, that, as my understanding is, that's certainly a cheaper option. So kind of one of those, don't overspend if we don't have to, to, you know, to provide the basic amenity that we're trying to provide. That's kinda why I asked about the asphalt piece. Anyway.
There's a lot of trees around, asphalt is a little more give.
Oh, that's a good point too, yeah. If we have any of those left.
As for Ariel, is that something that can be, you know, considered with a sidewalk or, and/or bike lane? Just because I do see a lot of people walking to Casey Lake Park from the, from the Cub side, and people also walk
Going Norris, yeah.
Maplewood does sidewalks a lot.
Yeah, I, so I don't know if Maplewood's got any plans for Ariel sidewalk-wise. I can certainly ask as we kind of work through the process with them. I don't think, I could be wrong, but staff will check. I don't think we have anything on the comprehensive plan for a trailer sidewalk on Ariel Street, but I could be wrong. Staff will check that as we move through the process. And as with any side, new sidewalk or new trail project, you know, outside of the curb line, sometimes that, there are trade-offs, so that could be difficult with loss of trees and that sort of thing. So that'll have to be something that we'd look at as well too. But yeah, staff will take that direction, and that's certainly something that we can, we're just getting going on the, the whole process, so there's plenty of time to figure that out.
Yeah, maybe the street's wide enough to do a, some kind of shoulder thing too, you never know. I recall
I think, I think it does, I think it, whether it's a striped shoulder or not, there's certainly width there for on-street parking and a shoulder, right? So even just, I'm not saying people should walk on the road necessarily, but even doing a striped shoulder sometimes provides some additional delineation, which is important, whether you're walking or a parked car or whatever. So that's a very reasonable and cost-effective way to even make, I don't think it has an edge stripe right now, right? But that's something that we could also take a look at.
Yeah, our, you know, the comp plan wasn't real detailed on that, but, but there were intents to connect to parks, you know, connect people to public facilities, whether it's the park or City Hall or whatever else, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. And, and I did think potentially that would be one of those where people would walk or bike up to 17th. So I think every possible trail wasn't included. There wasn't really a lot of emphasis. At one point, I know we talked about perhaps the city should have a sidewalk trail plan, just really just sit down and figure out what it is we wanna connect, and I think there've been a few attempts at that.
We have a map in the comp plan, and I think we've still referenced the living streets plan as well.
Yeah.
Which, that's maybe a bit outdated.
But there's also the what, safe to schools, what's that called?
Routs to school.
Safe routes to schools, that's another, that has to do with sidewalks or trails or
That's a funding program.
Yeah, yeah. So that's another funding option as well for that anyway, but it also is a goal. So anyway.
I just have a general question for some of the longer-term residents of the city. In terms of sidewalks, I know sometimes some communities, some residents don't like additional sidewalk because of the maintenance aspect in the wintertime. What's, what's the flavor of North St. Paul when anytime we propose new sidewalks in residential areas?
So I can, I lived through that for a couple of years. So we added a sidewalk to the east side of Lake, Lake Drive, Lake Boulevard, sorry, Lake Boulevard, from 19th north to Joy Road, kinda on the west side of Silver Lake. And there was a lot of vigorous discussion, both for and against the sidewalk. Snow removal and maintenance was certainly a big part of the discussion. By ordinance, North St. Paul requires property owners that own property with a sidewalk in the right of way coming across it to be responsible for removing snow, which is common. Not every city does that. I think through the discussion, we had found that the city of Oakdale, maybe Public Works or the city removes all snow on all sidewalks in Oakdale. I don't know if that's totally true, but I seem to recall that was a part of the discussion. North St. Paul does do snow removal downtown on sidewalks, right? So, but in residential areas, it's generally the responsibility of the property owner to, to keep it relatively traversable, right? Again, similar to St. Paul or Minneapolis or other urban cities. But that was a big part of the discussion on a street that didn't have a sidewalk that was planned and programmed to receive one. And now ultimately, so the council did decide to add that sidewalk to the project. It's been in for a couple of years. We have some people that live in the area, appears that people do use it on a regular basis. I personally haven't heard anybody complaining about anything specifically related to that sidewalk. However, Public Works did agree to remove the snow on that, that particular sidewalk because, yes, just on that piece from 19th to Joy, because of the fact that it was viewed less like a residential sidewalk and more like a regional, if you wanna call it that way, park-to-park connection, like from Joy Park to Silver Park. So that was a non-precedent-setting consideration that the city council said, yes, we will take that on, and I think that made some of the residents happy in that situation. But it is a little bit more unique of a sidewalk than a typical residential sidewalk. So I think that's how we got there.
I moved in here in 96 over on Indian Way and Helen, and at that time, they were trying to get a sidewalk down Helen, it was to east, and that never came through, the residents didn't want it. So then they put no parking and a side spot for people to walk, so.
Thank you.
Sometimes it goes through, sometimes it doesn't, it depends on. So at that time, the neighbor, we just moved, so it was already under construction, but they vetoed the sidewalk going down from north-south from 17th up to B.
I would think it's actually harder to keep the street portion
As a 46-year resident of this city, I can pass on, you have never seen council meetings, yet so in an uproar when you wanted to put in a sidewalk. Holy cow. And the mayor, previous mayor, was dead set against sidewalks. He did fold on the Lake Boulevard one, the only one he ever folded. They even had a $2 million grant from the watershed district to do 13th or 12th over here.
15th.
As a living streets, showing how living streets, down it went.
Yeah, it's sad.
So that's how a sidewalk goes. And as a person who lives on a street with sidewalks, I'm a little unhappy that they're plowing a Lake Boulevard. Make that an issue, thank you.
But I do think, I think, you know, the discussion we're having really gets at, because it is related to really the long-term view of what, what we wanna provide to all residents. And many times, the sidewalk issue comes down to, I don't want you putting that in my yard. I don't wanna lose that piece of my yard when people think that's their yard and don't realize necessarily, no, that's actually part of kinda the street, so to speak. So it gets, it gets difficult for the council, but I do think it pays to, and I think, Rick, you were there at the council meeting, one of them for the 19th Street, and essentially, you know, the, I think it was you who made the comment, you know, I believe in planning for the future, and that's really what this is all about, and the future isn't necessarily gonna be the same people who live there today. And some people want, some people need sidewalks. There's people around, live around me who need sidewalks, and we don't have them.
Well, and I think the, the plans had laid out, you know, you know, here's this kinda framework of sidewalks that would provide access to various parks, and there was a real reason to have the links between them like that. And, you know, it is a tough decision to do that, but it, I think, pretty important in the long run.
I think from the housing standpoint too, that's a factor that a lot of people are looking for too, when they consider homes, is how walkable is it? Can I get, you know, somewhere and just walk there safely? And, and that's just a really big factor that people make their housing decisions on.
Okay, any other? Yes, Rick?
I've got a question that's in a different part of the, the Capitol Improvement Plan. I noticed the, the water tower park looking to replace the water tower there, or at least the way I read it, it was, looks like they're gonna replace it. When I read the comprehensive plan, I got the impression that there was going to be a different water tower, an additional water tower being put in. Can you clarify that for me? I guess I'm
Sure.
Not sure I have everything correct.
So the, within the city's comprehensive water plan, going back to, I'll just say 2000 approximately, so it's been a known item for some time, that the city's storage, in terms of how much water storage it has available, given its, its system, and you size these things based on the demand, that how many people might be using water at any given time during the peak part of the season? So we've been a little, slightly less than kind of the general standard for how much storage a city of our size should have for some time. So it's always been a planned improvement to add some storage. That doesn't mean that you have to add a tower, that means you could replace an existing tower with a, a tower that just holds more water, right? And so the city's engineering consultant did perform a, a tower sighting and sizing kind of analysis in 2020. And what recommended approach came out of that was that, for a variety of different reasons, including the sighting, the hydraulics that are involved, also land acquisition, that in Tower Park, that actually building a new tower next to the existing tower while the old one is still online, but of size and capacity to replace the old one, but also take on the need for additional storage, and then dismantle the existing tower and be able to put that back to, you know, recreational use just in a slightly different place, maybe reconfigure some things. Now, there's a lot of detail to be worked out. That's a, that's a very broad brush stroke discussion of what could happen. Nothing's been authorized, nothing has technically been budgeted, but it's a very expensive improvement, and it's something that's been needed for a long time, and so from a planning standpoint, capital improvement planning standpoint, that's the general plan that we're hoping to implement at some point in the future. But there's no need for a water tower to be built tomorrow. We don't, we are not short water, this is, you know, this is simply trying to bring things up to standards. Our wells are operating efficiently and well and meeting demand, so there's no problem with our water system. But the new water tower will be larger and may, as recommended potentially by that study, replace the older, rather than spend money on rehabbing that smaller water tower and then trying to buy a piece of property or find another place for it. That tends to be the most agreed-upon, cost-effective approach to solving the problem. So that, that may be
And that'll address water pressure issues as well, you know, in some of the land that's developing, especially up around McKnight and, and 36.
So in that area, by McKnight and 36, it's actually a high-pressure area. The low-pressure areas tend to be north up into Maplewood, and that's all basically lay of the land. So we also did some, some pressure analysis. When a city has areas that are maybe getting towards too high and also other areas that are getting towards too low, and we have no areas that are identified as substandard for pressure, there are some areas that are low-pressure, but nothing that is too low. And that's been studied and measured. But when you have that situation, and if you were going to try to normalize things, you might think about splitting the city into two pressure zones. We looked at that, it's not cost-effective. It would cost a lot of money, and there would be still areas that might be tending too high and areas that might be tending too low. And so really trying to make the best of the system that we do have and invest in it in ways that hopefully reduce ongoing operating and maintenance costs and certainly include our, or improve our residual storage capacity. Those are gonna be the first areas of focus, in addition to replacing. We're, we've got some water main pipe coming up in the city at 80, 80 years old, which is past its lifespan for cast iron pipe. So we need to prevent having those go into water main break every year, you know, type of situation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, then I guess our action tonight would be to just make a determination to forward to the council as to our finding regarding the Capitol Improvement Plan complying with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So, again, this is not, perhaps I should clarify, this plan, the Capitol Improvement Plan, is not authorizing any particular project way out into the future. It really is a planning tool, just like the Comprehensive Plan is a planning tool. And plans can change, and as Morgan said, each year, the staff is probably going to be taking a look at it again and potentially reprioritizing, removing items, obviously, perhaps adding new items. So I just want to kind of set the tone here for what we're doing. So, do we have a motion?
So, we are forwarding it to the...
Yeah, we're just forwarding our finding to the council. That the 2022-2031 Capitol Improvement Plan complies with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, I'll move that.
All right, moved by Rick. I want you to repeat it.
Okay. Well, it'll take it a little time.
So I have a motion by Rick. Is there a second? Thank you, a second by Eric. Any further discussion, other than to thank Morgan for coming and giving us that explanation and answering our questions and any concerns we had? There's no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that'll be forwarded then as part of your, I guess, your presentation to the council when they're ready to adopt the plan, because that's what they still need to do, is adopt the CIP.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this will be Finance Director Daniel Winnick's item to present to council. I'll be there, and I guess we'll have to see how we want to fold this thing. But staff's direction, or a couple of action items for staff, is going to be check the Ariel project for opportunities with respect to multimodal, and also to continue to look at trail connection and trail improvement opportunities, maybe not within this iteration, but certainly future iterations.
I think potentially when it's amended or when the opportunities come up, because I think we've lost some.
And there...
It's hard to get, you know, get them back once you lose them.
Something for the public and the commission to think about, not to belabor the point, but Ramsey County does have cooperative project opportunities where the city has to pay for some of it, but if there's trails or sidewalks that are on the county road system, we can propose those, and I think there is some participation potentially from the county, so that might be a cost-effective way to look at things on, not on our road system, but those are important roads within our community as well, too, right? So...
Well, I think potentially when it gets updated, we, you know, the Planning Commission can even take a little time and look at, you know, where might some priorities be? Because there are some, there clearly are some, particularly as close to downtown, where we've got the gateway. And again, we just keep emphasizing the gateway, and then we don't just do it.
Would appreciate that input, I think. And also, I think that Joint EDA Planning Commission Task Force for downtown is going to be important, right?
Yeah.
Also, like what you mentioned, the new restaurant, and now you've got senior living, there's more people in that corridor than there used to be.
Exactly.
There would maybe just be Burger King, and that'd be about it. So now you do have a concentration of more people down there.
Yeah.
And if you think of it from the perspective of a person biking along the gateway trail, North St. Paul is probably one of the biggest draws for those kinds of activities, you know, eating lunch or stopping for a treat or whatever.
Not going to find much to the east.
Well, stopping at Love's is a big one.
Yes, yes.
I see...
Grandma's Bakery's down at the other end, but don't tell anybody. Not Grandma's, Maplewood Bakery. I used to stop there on the bike trail.
Now that, we mentioned that, one of the things that I was wondering about is the completion of like the downtown revitalization sidewalk portion of it, because we've expanded the sidewalks, but some of the other things that were included in that, like benches and bike racks, and that hasn't yet, that I can tell, been done. But the outdoor seating wasn't included in that. It's a good thing to have, but my question was, is there a plan for that? Is everybody going to go out and buy whatever they want and put it out on the sidewalk? Or is there a...
There's a discussion about that right now.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it's ongoing.
Because I noticed some, noticed some colorful stuff out there as I drove by.
We know that the Century's going to happen someday, the Century and Thirty-Six. Is there anything to talk about? Dairy Queen, or, you know, getting those guys relocated, because we know that corner's going away.
Yeah.
And that business, that is a popular place in the summer.
Yeah, no.
Get it on this side of downtown where the trail already is.
Yep. So the latest on that is that it's been discussed as more of a higher priority, not high priority yet. It's still not funded or planned or programmed by any agency right now, except Ramsey County did amend their transportation improvement plan just for a placeholder in 2025, which doesn't mean anything, because there's still no money identified. But I think what the movement that we've seen in the last year, year and a half, in terms of some of our state-elected officials, some impetus behind it with respect to the city of North St. Paul, both Washington County and Ramsey County officials as well, too, is that we're getting a little bit closer. But again, that 2025 Ramsey County thing is just a placeholder. But likely what you might expect to see is that one or both of the counties have potentially been dot competing for or working with maybe some of the upcoming federal transportation bill, regional dollars that would be, you know, they're working on it in DC right now, so we don't know what's there or when it will be coming, but that will likely be some sort of a federal funding application that will be spearheaded by one or both of the counties and MINDOT to try to fund that interchange, which is, the current number right now is $50 million.
And now, is that just the intersection, or is it also the repaving of Century?
$50 million would include the grade separation for the intersection, right? So separating Century from Highway Thirty-Six, the on-and-off ramps for both eastbound and westbound in either direction, and some improvements on Century South, at least as shown in the preliminary layout, to include the intersection of Seventh Avenue and Century Avenue. The preliminary, preliminary task force and designer identified at that time that the existing pad bridge could be worked around and would stay in place.
Wow.
Which was important because it was federally funded, so there's a twenty-year requirement that, you know, those federal funds actually support the infrastructure for that period of time. And I don't know, when that twenty years is up, I think it went in around 2010, or nine, or eight, or somewhere around there, right? So, but the intent is to try to work around it and keep it where it's at and still do the interchange. There's a lot of design to be done between now and then to solve that, but they think it, they thought it was feasible, so...
Well, okay. Thanks, Morgan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, I think we're set to move on to...
Chair Barton?
Yes.
I, Lisa and I, we heard the motion and the second, but we didn't hear the vote.
I thought we voted. We didn't? I'm sorry. Wow, thank you. Somebody must have got off on a different topic. All those in favor, well, we...
Dairy Queen, that's who did it.
You know the motion, does everybody remember the motion? Yeah, okay. They do.
The Planning Commission determines that 2022-2031 Capitol Improvement Plan complies with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Excellent.
And forwarded to the council.
All righty. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Poor Patrick.
What does it sound like to you when I speak to you?
The Lord.
Boy, I feel important now. If I turn on my video, here, 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 I'll turn on my video, and then you can see my halo, too.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. Do those special effects. Well, it actually is one.
Yeah.
All righty. On to Item B, which is the sign code update.
Thank you, Chair, and Planning Commission. I introduced Brandy Howell, new planner for WSB, three weeks ago. She's going to help me with the presentation, but I'll go over kind of a little bit of the background. Back in August, we started to look at the sign code, particularly the need to significantly revise the existing sign code, particularly due to the Reed versus Town of Gilbert Supreme Court ruling. And at that time, the Planning Commission stated that they wanted to start the discussion with reviewing the existing purpose statements. And then there were a couple of questions about the, particularly the election signs and the preemption that comes with that from the state statute. You know, what is defined as a sign? You know, banners and flattable objects, there's many things that are used for attention. And then finally, what we hope to have, we being Brandy and I, in this fourth item of reorganizing the sign code, we need to work on a little bit of a scope, both in how many meetings we think we should tackle, how much research is needed, that kind of thing. So at the end of this meeting, we hope not necessarily to have in concrete the path to recreating the sign code, but enough information that at our next meeting, we can, we can bring that forward. So of those four topics, Brandy's going to provide a presentation on the first and the last, so on the purpose statements. And then we put together a couple of example properties that Brandy's going to walk through that I think may illustrate what the current sign code would both allow and probably encourage, maybe to help understand, you know, the complicated nature of the code. We provided in the packet as one of the attachments, the League of Minnesota Cities has, has really good information on the preemption of the election signs and some information on what qualifies as a sign. So we don't intend to include that in our presentation, but if the council, or, sorry, if the Planning Commission asks questions, please feel free to ask. So at that point, I will turn it over to Brandy, who again will first talk about the purpose statements, and then, secondly, start talking a little bit about options to reorganize the sign code.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Let's see. Okay. All right, thanks for having me again tonight. As Eric mentioned, tonight, I'm just going to give a little presentation on the sign code ordinance update project. As you're already aware, the overall goal of the project is to bring the code into compliance in relationship to the Reed versus Town of Gilbert Supreme Court decision. We're also going to examine the code for consistency with the Comprehensive Plan and other provisions of the zoning ordinance. We'd also like to try to take a look at how we can simplify the ordinance and possibly clarify where needed. And so, as he stated, we're going to review the draft purpose statement and then start a discussion about the relationship of the sign ordinance to zoning ordinance. And so to get you thinking about impacts on sign types, height, location, impacts on land development and community character, I've got a couple of examples. Okay, so this is the existing purpose statement in the sign ordinance. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but there's a lot of emphasis on safety, community safety, harmonious environment, making sure that businesses are able to...
Brandy?
Yes.
Bring the microphone, maybe a little...
Sure can.
Maybe tilt it up just a tad. There you go.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Offering businesses a chance to express their business needs and individuality. Included in your packet tonight was the side-by-side of both the proposed and current purpose statements, and the intent of the purpose statement in general is to provide an overarching understanding of what is to be enforced by the sign ordinance and why it's important to the community. It should address economic activity as well as manage aesthetics. So the proposed, as shown on the screen, provides clarity on these issues. It addresses the court case by stating upfront that the intent of the ordinance is not to regulate content. So, sorry?
All right, Brandy, I think since we have kind of the two items, let's, let's pause there and have the Planning Commission provide some comments before we move on to kind of the fourth item in the agenda.
I know you're the one who, you know, originally brought up the purpose statement, so...
I'd like to, first of all, say that the item number four, provide a fair and consistent enforcement of the sign regulations set here and under the zoning authority of the city. I think that, to me, is a good addition. I think probably one of the most difficult parts of the sign ordinance, from my perspective, is having people understand what the heck it means. And I think embedded in that one is some of that. That also kind of goes to what I was concerned about in terms of the purpose, you know, what is it that we are regulating? Why are we regulating it? You know, what do we mean when we're talking about safety? How, you know, what level of detail is that? You know, when we're talking about aesthetics, you know, we want the city to look nice. We want, you know, it to be, you know, pleasing and comfortable for people. You know, what does that involve? I know that probably doesn't belong in the purpose statement, but for us as a group to kind of all have at least some kind of understanding, common understanding of, you know, what it is we're really looking to accomplish with this, you know? So that, that's some why I saw it as being important to talk about this and to review it.
Well, I think from a, I think it's item two on the proposed, yeah, the other piece of that, talking about visual clutter, that's the aesthetic end of it, but the other piece is also just visual distraction. I mean, if you can't read a sign, or you don't know what it means, or there's too many of them, that also, that's the, one of the public safety impacts, and I think that's where some of the focus is as well, especially as we get into particular signs. You know, I can't necessarily guess the intent of all the prior language, but some of it clearly seems to revolve around that.
Brandy's going to get into that, all the various types of signs, and we also are trying not to guess what all those got there, but...
But I like the, I like the simple stuff, you know, the simple, just say what it is. This is why we're doing it. More bullets doesn't necessarily make it any more meaningful, especially when they start to get repetitious, which is what I thought we had now, myself.
I think we've got a situation where, you know, where state law, you know, supersedes what our ordinances say. That's a pretty confusing situation for people, especially when there's, you know, there's time limi- when there's, you know, there's time limits on it.
Well, yeah.
You know, and, and that can be a particularly sensitive type of issue for, for, you know, you know, campaigns and so on. I don't know that people always kind of recognize that, okay, there is this kind of special time period, and somehow being clear about that for people is.
Well, and I think that's.
Probably avoids a lot of issues.
Yeah.
Could come up later.
Explaining what we're regulating. We're not, we're, we're not necessarily regulating the sign. We're regulating where you can put this, you know, how big it can be, except during election cycles, then no, not how big. But certainly, location, we can always regulate. We can regulate the type, you know, what it physically looks like. And what else can we, I mean, we could regulate certain things, and that's all that, you know, we're attempting to do. The state exemption doesn't take away the entire ordinance. It only takes away certain aspects of what we can say about, particularly height, I think, more than, and the number of signs.
You know, and.
Those are the two big ones, but we can still.
If it's.
Other times, we can regulate the number. And where they can be, we, even during election, we can do that.
Chair Barton, you can do that within limit.
Yeah.
You know, a public right of way that would cause traffic issues, yes.
Right.
There has been a recent Minnesota court case that placing signs on the property line, placing signs on fences that are in the property line, that you, you're not allowed to, to regulate that. Once it crosses into the public right of way, that's where you can, can implement some location regulations, even during election times.
And it's possible. I don't know for sure, but it's possible also in the, we talked about the vision triangle.
Yeah.
There as well, because now, again, you're talking public safety now. So that's a possibility, but that's neither here nor there.
And perhaps some of the lighting kinds of things and.
Illumination, yeah.
Illumination, yeah.
So, yeah, I like a simplify, I personally like a simplified purpose statement. How about the rest of you?
I mean, I think it's, like you said, it, to me, the most important thing is just letting everyone know that we're all on the same team and playing field, and we're all following the same rules. And the clarity here, I think, helps with that greatly. So I think it's a, it's a big step forward. It makes it a lot, a lot more clear to me, for sure.
I'll pile on. I just, I think it's nice. I think you guys did a pretty good job of making it succinct. And I see twice you mention constitutional guarantees, and it seems like that's, that's kind of what we're trying to get at, is some of these court cases are related to free speech. So I like that that's, you're throwing it out there at the get-go in the purpose statement, and I think that's, that's a good move.
Okay. All righty.
All right. I'll keep, keep moving. So next, we're going to review the, take a look at table 10, which is where the regulations live outside of the text part of the ordinance. So in this, in this example, I just wanted to focus on the top district, the MU1. So I think the table in itself is an attempt to try to simplify the rules, but I think it had the effect of maybe making it a little bit more complicated for the general public. And those are not, you know, used to. So in a cursory look, there's a couple of red flags that we saw, definitely not everything. I just wanted to point a couple of them out. So in the second column, you see, the first column is the district and then parcel size, I believe, but it doesn't specifically say that. The third column refers to maximum height. We're not entirely sure if, I, I think it's a blanket statement. All signs of any kind can be 25 feet of monument versus freestanding. So that, that would be regulatory policy to consider, whether or not it's appropriate to have several different sign heights, depending on the sign type. Is 25 feet appropriate in the downtown area? Perhaps not. In the sixth column, the maximum size for monuments, sign faces listed. However, it's specific to institutional uses. This rule could be construed to be a conflict with the Reed case. And then the eighth column, it references street frontage. Is this to say that in the MU1, you could have two 25-foot pylon signs if you have two, two street frontages in that area? So it seems a little bit inconsistent with the character of the downtown. So as we move through the code update, we'll evaluate the rules in the chart and also how to best present them for usability and clarity. So here's a couple of hypothetical scenarios. So this is the corner of McKnight and, sorry, I'm not 100% familiar with the community at Castle Avenue. So just a little bit north of Castle is Highway 36. So we're just going to pretend that we've got an applicant here that wants to redevelop the site. He wants two signs on the property. The zoning district is the MU3, which requires a 25-foot setback in the front, but zero setbacks on the side and the rear. The purpose of his application is to bring forward two signs, because presumably he can. There is a maximum square footage for sign area of 200 square feet. So that's a consideration. Is that enough sign area? Is it too much for this kind of sign? I mean, we're talking about two signs, front and back. Are we talking about the calculation? Does it include the front and the back? It's not clear. So again, there's just a lot of questions to be, to be evaluated. And then the second one would be a downtown business. Would we want to allow a 25-foot pylon sign in a, in front of, front yard setback of the downtown area when all the rest of the buildings have a zero frontage or a zero-foot setback? So just considerations of consistency. Would you like to open it up for discussion at this point?
Well, I would like to ask a question.
Sure.
Do we define pylon sign?
Pylon is not defined. Freestanding is.
Does freestanding actually indicate what we mean by freestanding?
I don't have the definition memorized or right in front of me, but I think it's, I think it's pretty common in planner lingo that pylon equals freestanding, but it wouldn't be a terrible idea to clarify.
Well, I would just, I would, I'm just interested to know, because I can't recall the definition of freestanding, but I know we have an awful lot of signs defined, but there are some basic ones we don't define. That is one.
I could certainly take a look while we, while we discuss.
Chair Barton, I think that's a great comment. You know, that is something that, as we look at the entire ordinance, we need to observe. Why we chose these two examples, you know, was particularly with that chart, you have the, all the types of signs that are allowed, and saying that they're allowed in every district. And so, and then, not in that chart, but within the code, it says the setback for all signs are 10 feet. So is that logical in the downtown when you've got buildings that are not 10-foot setback from the street? You know, already do we have an inconsistency, but as, as Brandy found, you know, tried to find, find an example in the MU1 of a site that has a 10-foot setback, how could that work? One thing we would bring to the planning commission's attention as we move forward, but there's other sections of the code that come into play as well. One of those being, and Brandy, maybe can you bring back up the, the site at 36 and, and McKnight? This might work well on that site, but other locations where the MU3 is located, such as Century and, and South Avenue, you know, you don't have that same highway frontage where you're going to need somebody to see, you know, 1,000 yards ahead that there's a business there. It's the same regulations. But the landscape code would require a landscape yard in that 10 feet on, on both sides of that street. So the business owner is coming in. He could choose a monument sign. They could choose a freestanding sign. Both could be up to 20 feet, 25 feet tall, but they both need to be 10 feet back. Most monument signs, most cities don't allow a monument sign to be 25 feet, but even if they were looking at like 10 feet, when you're 10 feet off the property line and you have landscaping between the street and the sign, who's going to choose the monument sign when the code is almost set up that I'm going to, I'm going to request a freestanding sign, because that's just going to be easier than trying to navigate, can I get the monument side closer to the street? Can I get a break in the landscaping yard to allow my monument sign to be seen? So what we want, why, part of the reason why I brought up these examples is there's multiple things to look at. And then zoning makes sense to apply to signs, but where properties, such as those two examples of MU3 zone properties, as far as a business owner trying to have a sign, there's a different goal. I don't think, I, I, business owners always have their own choices, but the person at South Avenue and Century, you're not trying to get people off, to get off an intersection of 36 to come to their business. So do they need the same size, same height of a sign? That might make sense here.
We actually ran into that with the, remember the, oh, gosh, what was that, placed by Ace Hardware?
I don't know where.
Where they, they wanted, you know, a variance for a taller sign, because once 36 was reconstructed, their sign wasn't visible on, you know, if you didn't know it was there, the business, you wouldn't see the sign unless you actually got off on exit, and then you could see it. And that was one of those, you know, that's just not a good, good situation. So it was never really addressed until now. I mean, now is, I think, just a really good time. Even as part of the code update, we've got new districts, you know, different downtown districts than we've had before, and a lot more mixed use, which I think also starts to play into that. We've got certainly the, the new apartment building downtown, two entirely different uses. So we've got the apartment use, they've got, you know, the restaurant use that are going to want their own signage, and maybe, you know, they're going to look different. And we're, you know, we've kind of been in that we want everything to look the same. And going forward might not work.
To expand on that one, you know, this is even just, you know, kind of signs in, in their design of are they freestanding or monument. And, you know, we as staff are not advocating one way or another, but we are getting many more requests for digital signs. Now, having a 25-foot freestanding digital sign is a completely different sign than having a 10-foot tall monument digital sign. And so those are the kinds of things we're going to need to consider as well as when we move forward.
Yeah. But yeah, it's really, it is time to look at it. I'm surprised we haven't gotten more. I mean, I've seen more digital signs, but nothing that you'd go, oh, my goodness. But that could happen at any time. So I think, as always, a lot of times, the definitions really matter, because if you, if we're not sure even what something means, then you can be guaranteed that the applicant isn't, and the, just a regular resident who doesn't deal with code isn't. So.
I've got a comment on the table, just in general. And I'd like to, to use an example. So if we look at the first part of the, the table under MU1 and the column of wall signs.
And maybe put, can you put it up on the? I like it on here, because I can see it.
Yeah. In, in, in the wall signs, we've got, for different sized buildings, we've got different requirements. And it's a two-piece requirement. It's 10% of the wall area consistently for all building sizes. And it's got a variation depending upon, you know, the, the square footage category that it's in. I think we could probably simplify that whole column and make it say something like 10%, my screen just, 10% of, just a minute, 10% or 100 square feet, whichever is less. And have that, just simplify that whole column so that anything in MU1 would follow that category. I suspect that something similar could be done with these other ones that go specifically to the individual square footage category for the, for the building. And I think that would go a long way in, you know, at least for me, in terms of understanding what is there. And for people in general, I would expect it would be useful in that way. So, yeah, there's two criteria, there's actually three criteria there that we're using, and I think we can eliminate at least one of them, you know, and just have it simplify things quite a bit.
Well, I have actually a more basic question as well, and that just has to do with, let me look at it now. Boy, you got that off there fast, of the TV right here. And that is monument sign face, you know, max sign face. And of course, institutional is in the MU1, the only use that's listed. Right? I mean, that monuments or institutional says. So does that mean the others, no other use can have a monument sign?
Well, we, we, being Brandy and I, had a conversation exactly how that means, and that would be something we'd need to go in the definition. But, you know, what do you mean by institutional? You know, a lot of people would say churches and schools, but with our, there's not many of those in our downtown. If there's, you know, are you talking about nonprofits or things like American Legion or, or VFW? Well, I guess maybe, to cut to the chase, whatever the uses doesn't get to the issue that they could be using that sign for commercial or non-commercial speech. We shouldn't be talking about uses and one use gets a sign over another use. If we think it's appropriate that there are, can be non-commercial signs, we can say, we can, we can, we can be more restrictive to limit where commercial signs are located, but we can't, we, it's not that we can't, we can't be more restrictive on, on non-commercial. So is the intention of institutional use mean non-commercial speech? And if it does, that's what it should say, not institutional.
Well, and I guess my, my point was entirely different, that what does it matter? Who put the sign up?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's the only district that does that.
No, which to me is one of those, why?
Yeah.
I mean, why would that be okay, but if this business next door put a sign up, that would be unacceptable. That's what was not making sense to me. So that's why I questioned that one. I think we have to be careful about.
That whole column.
Pardon me?
It could almost eliminate that whole column.
Yeah. I just, I don't under, again, it's just one of those considerations I think we want to keep in mind, especially as we're getting at the purpose.
Right. You know, but these are the kind of conversations that Brandy and I were hoping we'd have, because, you know, there's an example of, and I don't know that either, either one of our, you know, your view on what that means or should mean, and, and Brandy and I, but, you know, we. you know, we, we want to hear what's important to the planning commission so we know, you know, how much, I'll go back up. I kind of introduced it back in August, but we do have a choice of going two ways with our sign code. We can go completely simple, number, location, size, we don't care about anything else. That will become a very quick code. You know, I mean, it, it, in, for me, height is part of the location. But, you know, it's, you get a 15-foot-tall sign and it needs to be 10 feet from the property line, you get one of them. Why do we care after that? Whether it's on the wall, whether it's a monument, whether it's freestanding, that's one direction you can go with the sign code. You can, you know, think that there's distinct differences in different districts that, you know, we need to think about, that there are schools and churches located in R1 districts and we need to make sure that we're got a adaptive sign code that, that, that could allow for that kind of thing. What I mean by that is, I'm not, I have no idea if that's a why, but in a residential setting, maybe that's why you do have different sign regulations depending on the size of the lot. You know, that a single-family home that might be on a 6,000-square-foot lot gets this sign option, where a school that might be on a couple acres might get another option. You're not regulating it by use, you're regulating by size. But my point is, we could go and make a very simple sign code where let the homeowner, let the church, let the business decide what, what they want to use their allowance to be. Or we could get very, still, try to, try to find the nuances and find the right size for the right location. My example back of, and we could do that maybe through an overlay of, is it really appropriate that every MU3 property could have a 25-foot-tall freestanding sign? Or is that really only important if you're within a quarter-mile of Highway 36? So, we're looking for some direction. Do we kind of want to be hands-off, just size, location, number? Or do we want to be more nuanced? That will change our, our scope, and that's the, you know, kind of the direction Brandy and I are looking for.
So, as you look at what we, it seems to me what you're saying is it's, well, it's confusing, number one, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is why is it confusing? Is it the format? Is it the lack of knowing what's really allowed where? It seems to be a mix of things. So, I struggle with this one because I first off find that it's formatted so poorly that it's hard to even understand in some areas. So, my tendency is to say, I would like to go as simply as possible, but not so simply that things could get out of hand before we realized it. That may be the easiest way for me to say it.
I just, I'm newer to this, so I'm sometimes, maybe the question isn't, I'm just trying to, in my mind, like Richardson to school, when I drive, we drive down that street. Right now, that's a monument sign that lights up. If that was on a pole, that'd be a whole different look to the neighborhood there. It would look like it's a business area. So, would that be part of this? Could they put a, put one of the signs up that are there? Or is that, I don't know what zone that is, I can't remember off the top of my head. But that would really change the look of the neighborhood.
That's residential.
We'd have to pull up the, the R1 regulation, so that's the next table. But it's an institutional use, but it's, and, and that's a good example. If we wanted to keep that intent of the very last table of residential gets two-square-foot and institutional gets, is that 60 or 80? 60?
60.
I would label it in a different way. That, that, I wouldn't want to try to defend that from the Gilbert ruling. But we could borrow the idea, again, like in the MU districts of different-sized lots get different-size signs. And that's a way that somebody, you know, it's typically that the institutional have the larger lots. And I mean, it's completely rational that, you know, you, you don't want, you don't want too much clutter in total size. So, the current code, I think, is looking to do what you want. It kind of does it in, you see maximum sign height regardless of use is six feet. So, at Richardson, they're not going to be able to put a 25-foot-tall sign. Now, now what we'd have to look at is, should it come into play? I believe an institutional use would be subject to the regulations of our landscape ordinance. And if there was a requirement of a 10-foot landscape yard and the vegetation that goes with that 10-foot landscape yard, and then you have a six-foot sign 10 feet from the property line behind that landscape yard, do you really get a sign? So, how, you know, so, if you want to regulate that, that different, different size parcels within a zoning district like that has different regulations, I think we could look at that. But a single-family home would not be subject to the same landscape regulations. Now, a multifamily would, that's probably not going to fall in the R1, but when you're looking at R3, you have that same height limitation. So, that's, that's a good conversation because if I ignored kind of the, the very end and the troublesome part of residential and industrial, that's a pretty simple table. You know, how, how much square foot footage do you get? What's the maximum height? Done. But if you're, if you feel that Richardson School should have a different sign than a single-family house, well, then it's, it's going to be a little bit more complicated of a sign code because we can get there. But this isn't going to stand up in court the way this is written right now.
Well, the other, and I think this also, it's, there's just also the simple issue on this particular one, is that all, all that's supposedly allowed in the R1 for a single-family home is a two-square, two-square-feet of sign. Well, you can't even stick a yard sign in if you're, you know, your numbers on your house are two-square feet. It's like, no, this is really not right.
And I don't know many realtors that have a two-square-foot-for-sale sign. So, you're absolutely right there. But there, there's a way, we could still be simple, but, you know, the first column and the last column are troublesome in trying to dictate different uses get different signs.
Right.
And then, you know, we want to bring in the other regulations, which is part of the reason why, you know, why we brought those, those first examples. And as we move forward, we'll try to bring examples as well to, Chair Barton, your exact question. Yes, we want to try to be simple, but do we get some unintended consequences? But what I think I would like to probably do next is Vice Chair Mungy, that, you know, good example there of like, how would you do Richardson? How would you do, you know, some of these other properties? I would like to, how to say this, but, but come forward with some examples to try to solicit, what is the planning commission's value? Because this one's simple. You know, we talked about some problems, but simple lets people, you know, make their choices. If there's many different types of signs, how do we get there? In the previous example, particularly the one by 36 at McKnight, they could choose to do a monument, or they could choose to do a pylon, or maybe it would be better next time to come with an example at South and, and Century. With the way the code is written, are we encouraging anybody to choose the monument sign? I would argue no. We, we are actually setting up a sign code that is discouraging people from choosing the monument sign. So, if this sounds like the way the planning commission would like to head, what I would like to solicit a little bit is, what do you want? You know, what are, like, if you had two choices of same property where they could get a freestanding sign or monument sign, which one do you want to encourage? Or are you perfectly fine that the business owner picks which one they want?
I don't think anybody has a strong preference because it's something you have to, I think you have to kind of think through as far as, to some degree, a lot of it depends on where is it? I mean, that's absolutely true. It depends on the district, the, the physical aspects of the property. In some cases, properties are limited, just physically to what they can provide. So, that's where you can't make it so simple that you really essentially don't have anything to work with.
And Chair Barton, I think.
Have a preference. It's like, well, you know, sometimes that's what you want and it seems to fit, kind of approach.
I, I like the notion of tying it to the size of the property, as you suggested, or, or the, the height of the building, or the size of the building face, or something along that line. I liked your notion of, you know, within a certain distance of Highway 36 as being a reasonable kind of thing to see happen. All of those are important to the owners of the property that are, you know, that are, what they're looking to accomplish out of it. But it keeps us from over-regulating it and, and, you know, gives us kind of a performance criteria to use to, to make a judgment on it. There may need to be certain limits in terms of how big it could be or how, you know, something along that line to, you know, to kind of keep it within some bounds. But it, you know, it, it seems like that could be simple yet flexible in terms of the way it responds to different owners' needs.
And just from the visual, or the visual clutter piece of it too, you can also just limit a certain number, whether one or two or three is the correct number, I don't know. But, and also the, I think the illumination is something that we need to care about. Especially, again, I think about the new restaurants and they're going to want definitely, illumination is, business wants that.
Yeah. As well as movement and flashing and.
Yeah, that whole thing. I mean, illumination is one thing, flashing and strobing and all that is an entirely different one. But that's why you do differentiate sometimes between something that's in a residential district versus something that's in a retail, you know, business-oriented location. And again, I think the timing to really think through this is now because we do have these mixed uses.
Do gorillas count as, you know, giant inflatable gorillas, do those count as content from a First Amendment perspective?
What?
I mean, it's content.
Art, that's art.
It, it counts as a sign.
Yeah.
Now, where, where you're talking about content a little bit, what, what normally comes next is, is the message of the giant gorilla, non-commercial or commercial? And in very few occasions, is it a non-commercial message?
Yeah.
Maybe it's, you know, if we had the World Wildlife Federation in town, maybe you could argue that's non-commercial. But in most cases, it's getting you to the site to, to look at something else and it's something we're very free to regulate.
The other thing that we actually do have also is the temporary signs. I think that's another piece that needs to be looked at. And that includes, gosh, what, banners and balloons and.
Yep.
All other kinds of decorative-type things that are, you know, this business, if you're doing this, you get to have this many days. And if you're not doing that, but you're doing this, you can only do that for so many. That, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense as far as, you know, we're getting into specific types of events and essentially advertising purposes more than anything else. So, I just think we want to take a look at how we even address those.
And it's a whole enforcement issue. How do you, how do you enforce that?
Well, I think you both are getting to what I'd bring up, and that's something we intend to, to address. It's not, it's, what would be in between, you know, what's allowed and what's enforced is, is how is it administered? Because if you set up all these rules that it has to be no longer than five days and you can't do it more than three times, and every time you do, you have to come to City Hall and get a permit, that administrative makes it a nightmare. But if you, you know, we'll talk about it in more detail, but I would caution from getting rid of that altogether, but you can, you can set up those are the regulations because we do have a section of basically what's, what's kind of exempt from the sign code. I don't remember if garage sales falls in that category, but, but you can set it up where, here's the regulations, you know, you, you can't have temporary signs so long that they become permanent signs, but you still don't have to come down to City Hall and get a permit. It just becomes a, a code enforcement issue of, hey, this has been up for nine months. The code says you got five days. You gotta, we have a mechanism to take it down. But, you know, we could talk about administration where it's, here's the rules, we trust that people are going to follow the rules and we're only going to use it, as we do with most cases, code enforcement is done on a complaint basis, not city staff going out looking for something.
Talking more about like the banners and street stringers and all of that.
Grand opening like for the restaurant when it opens.
Yeah, like, well, and more than that, it's just you can't display this unless this, and almost purpose by purpose. If it's a grand opening, you can do this. If it's not, if it's a sale, oh, you can do this. It's like, I would just, just look at them and I just find them.
I will say that would not pass the mustard of Reed versus Gilbert. Because if you have to know that it's a grand opening to know if the sign's allowed, you are starting to regulate content. No, if, if we wanted to do temporary signs, it would be, how big? How long? How many?
Right.
Done. We don't care if it's a grand opening, we don't care if it's somebody's graduation party.
Right.
You know, it's a, it's a 50th anniversary, just number, size, duration.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I like that, and when I say simple, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is it's not, gets so complicated unless it's truly a sign we don't want.
Yep.
Then you just say, that kind of sign's prohibited, if there is one.
No giant inflatable gorillas.
Yeah. Got one in the garage waiting to blow up?
Just waiting for your permit, huh?
Oh, yeah. So, what else do you need?
But to that, we'll look at the, the definitions a little bit. I don't know that I, we need a little, too much more. I'll ask Brandy if there's anything she, she'd like to ask so we can, know kind of where we're heading. But there is a definition of a mural in the code, so we got somewhere to start. But, but to the point of is a giant inflatable gorilla a sign and is something we can regulate? And back to Chair Barton's not trying to have unintended consequences, we don't want to make a mural a sign and then. to make a mural a sign and then it needs to have the 10-foot setback and da-da-da. So now I think we're safe in kind of the Gilbert tests, provided our murals are non-commercial. You know, that they're, they're works of art, they're not advertising. We would be safe to set things up that we can make murals exempt from, from the sign code.
Not, I don't necessarily have a problem with that at all. I think that is one of the exceptions. I just think we have to be careful how many exceptions.
Yep.
We actually do have too many as far as I can tell because if, if you're going to exempt five or six different entities from this particular regulation, then why have it?
Correct.
If, you know, we might as well just let everybody do it.
Correct.
I think about that every time the booyah signs go out.
Mm-hmm.
Because we don't allow them. Except, really, I mean, if they can line the road for the booyah, why are we not allowing anybody else to do that?
Mm-hmm.
And it's not necessarily something we want, you know, I'm not saying we should allow everybody to do it.
Right.
I'm just saying you have to be careful about your exemptions.
Looks like you already exempted mosaics and murals.
Pardon me?
Your murals are already listed as exempt.
Yeah, there's a list, there's murals and statues and what else? Fountains, other works of art?
Let's get a phone.
Yeah. Think of what you could put out in your yard. Art.
Yeah, I think from the standpoint of simplicity and thinking about enforcement, I think from my observation and discussions with people in the community, it's, there's a lot of confusion period and so I think if people have that simple message, then they're more likely to comply with the code enforcement issue and the administrative. But yeah, I agree with the simplicity, as simple as we can reasonably go will lead to more, you know, people doing exactly what we're asking.
Well, and some, the one thing I noticed last, I guess last year during the election too, is how confusing it was for people. I mean, they, and that is what happens when you have a very lengthy ordinance too, that's repetitive to some degree, but not consistent necessarily, is they'd read something, grab that and say, here's what that says, and then not read the rest of it, and that somehow is different over here. So I like it, that's when, when I say simple, I just mean, define your terms and don't make the reading any more complex than it needs to be. Shouldn't need to really interpret it, should be able to just read it and it's understandable.
Yep.
Experience dealing with other municipalities and, you know, examples of sign code, and not even just sign code, but, you know, to me, I mean, I guess I'm more of a visual person and I think a lot of people are, do you know, is, would there be a way to take these charts and add some sort of visual element to them where you could, you know, say in this overlay district, you know, so you're tying now a map to it and also, so you're locating it now, and then you can say, you know, maybe have some sort of iconography with, you know, this sign type, this sign type, this sign type, where, I mean, I know this is maybe a bigger exercise than just changing the chart, but I think that it goes to the simplicity where you can just look at something, I mean, a sign is already a visual thing. Have you ever seen that? Done anywhere?
Commissioner Wise, well, before we answer, Brandy, can you show the figures section of the code in addition to the table? So we've started, so we definitely have a, somewhere to start. We talk about a couple of things like awnings and canopies and it's not complete, but it's helpful. We definitely can look at where, you know, we can improve in that. That's on helping people understand, you know, what are the types of signs or types of regulations. We could certainly talk about maps if we wanted to go the way of an overlay. When you talk about other communities, many communities tie signs to their, their design guidelines, which are often broken out into design districts. Now, probably the only one I think we really have is downtown, the downtown overlay, and it's going to be important when we look at signs, what are the appropriate downtown, what are the appropriate signs downtown that, well, it'd probably be the reverse. There's probably signs that would be appropriate outside the downtown that will not be appropriate to the downtown. What I'm not hearing here is, there are a lot of regulations you could put on signs that, that don't deal with content, but of consistency, everybody's using the same materials, everybody's using the same colors, everybody. There are many communities that do that, and at least in our conversations, I've not heard that that's the direction we want to go. But, so, we need to find that balance of, yes, we can add some images, but we don't want to be too specific about the images that it infers, they must be masonry, they must be, you know, earth tones, that kind of thing. So we'll get there, I mean, we can get there. We just wanted to point out, the code has started, but unless you intend to create design districts that are going to that level, our figures and images will be fairly rudimentary on purpose to not try to infer a specific design standard or look for the community.
Are you trying to develop standards or are you trying to develop a way to evaluate how to move forward with making changes to the ordinance? Do you need the visualization to help you determine what the policy should be?
No, I, no, I think I'm saying more just for somebody who, you know, wants to put a sign on a church.
Okay.
They can quickly, you know, I mean, I had seen these before, I think in my mind, I was thinking of something less specific, like you said, than even what these are. You know, no material, no, I'm thinking more, you know, size, you know, just very, almost icons of what, you know, you could show what a billboard sign is within, with a 2D icon as opposed to like a rendered, you know, thing like that.
Correct.
I don't know, I mean, it's just, it's something that I think could easily be folded into a chart-like idea, but be a little bit more clear without having to spell things out in, you know, but like I said, I know that's kind of a different exercise. This is, this is getting to what I was talking about, but.
Commissioner Wise, I don't think we should look at it as a different exercise because at least if I'm taking from what you're saying, it's just another method of adding that clarity. You know, we all know some people are very text, you know, read text and, and can come with a vision in their mind, and other people are very visual and, and, you know, need an example. So I think we should tie the two together. Now, does that mean every meeting, we're going to have discussion on text and, and the images? No, but over the whole, the whole project here, and particularly before we start to, you know, conduct a public hearing or make a recommendation to the city council, that we, we have those elements. Now, the last piece, which I think we, we should have a little bit of a discussion is, what do we want to do about education? And when I say that, that's two ways. Education in, do we want to actively solicit input from our residents and our businesses beyond just holding a public hearing? That's one part of the education. The second part of the education would be building off of your idea, the images of, yes, here's the code, here's, here's the, you know, the images we may have in the code, but can there be fairly simple handouts that can be an education piece of, this is what this means, this isn't what that means? There's, there's ways outside of, you know, the, the specific sections of the code to help convey those messages of, this is the intention and this is what that text in the code means. So kind of two different parts of education, but, you know, I, this is, this section of the code is the one section of the code that I want us to be conscious of, do we follow our practiced historical method of process and, and input? You know, we have businesses, we have nonprofits that what this ends up with is going to be very important to them. So do we need a method to make sure, you know, and that has a whole level, you know, I mean, you can go as far as having a workshop of, of these people coming in. It could be more simple of, you know, letters, using our existing communication channels, making sure that it's occasionally on our social media posts, whatever, you know, so there's a, there's a spectrum there of how we solicit that input, but I think signs, I just say that in that this is something that impacts a lot of people, particularly like business owners who are not developers. Many other sections of our code, it isn't the person looking to, to start a salon that needs to know what the setback is and how the parking lot needs to be landscaped and how, what the lot size is. But Lisa and I see it, we get the salon owner who renting a space that had a different use and a different sign, what does this mean that I get 10% of my frontage? And particularly, and we'll get into more detail about that, but when we have a multi-tenant building, there needs to be a sign package and, and what that means and how that works when, when you get this implemented. So that's why I wanted to bring it up of, this section of the code in my practice, you know, my, my past experiences, hits a different group of both residents and business owners than kind of the traditional zoning code does.
Well, you know, I would just say that I think till we take this next step-
Mm-hmm.
-that that's a hard, I do think there are ways that we need to communicate, I don't know if that's open house or it's just using use of, you know, social media or whatever, but until we have something that's even clear enough to us, it's hard for me to envision. What would the best way be? I mean, ideally, it's in person.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you've got something people can see, they can react to, they can give you immediate input. I think this one's maybe a little harder using the internet. I mean, some people will take the time to do that, but, I mean, I can see the need, I think that's important. This is, signage is a big piece of how a business or even a nonprofit sells itself and being visible so people know who they are and where they are. That really is important, yeah.
I think we're going to have a real hard time engaging people unless they've got an immediate, you know, investment in it. I need a sign, I need to understand this and I need to understand it quickly. So it's almost like the people that we want to survey are the people that are applying for a sign.
Right.
And get some response from them rather than trying to do an open house where, you know, it's like, what do I want to do tonight? Do I want a sign, you know, open house?
Kind of depends on what we, if we make big changes, then it kind of depends.
Well, I mean, this is, this is good feedback, I'm kind of, you know, thinking off the top of my head. And only, the reason why I kind of interject here a little bit is, you know, this conversation is good of, of, part of that question is when? You know, I mean, if you have a task force, subcommittee formed, you know, you're looking for that engagement early, drive in the direction from that task force, you know, Chair Barton, want to hear your comment, the engagements later. Commissioner Gelbman, want to hear your comment though, it's, okay, what are, what are people wanting? I think there's a way we could try to get to that without, you know, like contacting what, I remember Erin had done this, I think, during the comp plan, but similar to the exhibit she prepared of, how many variances are we getting, what type of variances they are, where are they? We can look at our, our permit software of what kind of signed requests are we getting, who are the people that are requesting? Because, you know, the signed request that came in from QuickTrip was very complicated, but had a professional that knew that, you know, compared to somebody who's moving into a salon, which was used to be an insurance agency, that's a completely different type of permit and, and issue. So I think, and I guess I'll pose it this way to see if anybody objects, I think I'm hearing a little bit, we need to be cognizant of, of the input, particularly communicating out what the intention and the changes are, which to me is a little later in the process, you know, to council member, or Chair Barton, what you're saying, you know, we've got to grasp what we have and what we want to do before we could start to communicate, you know, is this right or wrong? But I think maybe if we take a look at kind of particularly the last three to five years of signed permits we got, you know, what have been the requests, somewhat what have been the issues that have resulted in those requests, and that might be helpful for us to, to look at how to change things.
Are we kind of on the clock with this new building over here? As far as were the apartment and the restaurant? I mean, that's right smack dab in the middle of town as far as how we want to have signage?
I mean, we have a code in place. You know, I, I do think there are a couple of things that maybe-
Is there a curb, anything like that? They might want a sign that goes out maybe?
Yeah.
Stuck right there in the front.
We, we have some inconsistencies, like the one that really comes to mind is the section of the code that says, "In all zoning districts, signs shall be set back 10 feet from the property line." Well, then we also say you can have awning signs and projecting signs. Well, there's no, those two, you know, there's, so-
But this is in the downtown and that's in the downtown overlay.
But it still says in all zoning districts, it shall be-
I understand, but you know what I'm saying.
I do, I do. So I think there, I'm not looking to, to change that wholeheartedly right now. I think just to your point, good thing to keep, keep mind of, we have regulations on the downtown, we have regulations on awnings, on, on projections. We, I think if it becomes that big of a deal, you know, if, we, we could always pose either a variance, which I don't know would be the right method, but a, you know, a one-line text amendment to resolve that issue for now and clean it up globally. You know, that building, while it's moving along fast, you know, isn't going to be open tomorrow, so I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to come up with a solution today, but I think it's a good point to keep it on our radar and make sure that changes that are needed aren't preventing those businesses from doing what they have. But I think there's a basis that, that we can start the conversation and hopefully find a solution for them.
Can we use the EDA to kind of, you know, initial point of contact with, I mean, they're much more connected to business owners, you know, than we are at general, and if they be a point of contact to start that discussion?
Actually, there's the Business Association too, which is made up of, I don't know how many members there are, there used to be a goodly number.
Well, um-
And once it gets to that-
Yep, yep, well, you know, I, I appreciate the comment because that's, that's a, you know, good way to be thinking of it. What I think might- know, good way to be thinking of it. What I think might be worth considering is, you know, we haven't determined the full scope of the redevelopment master plan, you know, revision. There might be opportunities to combine some of the public engagement slash education of that plan with, with this as well, and that already is, is, you know, including the EDA on, on that board or the task force, but I would certainly hope that that task force would reach out to the Business Association as we move along in that plan. So, I appreciate the comment. I think we have, we have a, possibly a really good synergy with, with that project to try to engage kind of the same group of people for two different subjects, but for them at one time.
We've never had this many people moving in too. I mean, it's downtown, we're going to have lights and people trying to sleep, and they're adding, you know, we've never had that many people living in downtown.
Yep, yep. That's right. Brandy, is there anything you can think of that we need to ask before we take that next step? So, you know, I, I don't see anything on the radar where we're going to be calling for a special, you know, meeting between, between now and our next regular meeting.
Just the joint EDA planning commission meeting, so don't add another one in there.
No, no, exactly. But I'm just looking at our calendar.
What's the date? I thought it was the 21st.
So, November 4th would be the next planning commission meeting. I guess I'm just setting expectations that, but it's kind of both a setting expectations and asking for some input. What Brandy and I would expect to bring back is both a summary, summary of the issues we discussed today and some possible methods of how to, how to address those issues. But we would draft a proposed schedule of how to, you know, how to address those in the series of meetings, maybe even start to think about possibly where public engagement could fall in that. I'm hearing from, from tonight's discussion, a little later in the process. But what's important at the same time is putting together a preliminary budget and having a discussion with the city manager on, is that covered under the existing adopted budget, or is it something we need to raise to the level of the attention of the city council before we get too far down the line?
Okay.
So, we won't, we won't be bringing on November 4th, new ideas like, you know, here's the old purpose statements and the new purpose statements, what do you think? Just for the fact of we, we needed, Brandy and I needed this meeting to kind of wrap around, you know, where we're going, how long it's going to take, what, what it needs to cover. But we do need to take a pause a little bit, just to give you guys an opportunity to say, yes, this is, you know, carrying forward our direction, but might need a pause as well, just to make sure that the city manager and city council are aware of what we're doing and, and particularly if there's cost implications to it.
Well, and I, you know, I do think that just the, the initial discussion tonight, it kind of makes it clear that what we have an ordinance, but how, whether or not we could really enforce it, if somebody said, nope.
Yep.
I'm doing this. That's where the vulnerability lies for, you know, what the city is trying to even accomplish with the ordinance we have. So, I think, you know, there's merit in going forward. And also, just to bring it up to date, it's really out of date.
Correct.
You brought up a lot of, how did you even manage that, you know, so?
Well, I mean, in some of them, like that residential example where there was the, if it's residential and institutional, I think I could understand the intent of that. But to your point, that's not defensible. That's not the way to do it. So, and then, you know, everybody, I think, brought up some of them that are just like, we'd all shake her head, why are we even, what are we trying to accomplish here? Why are we even, why are we even doing that? So-
I remember, and maybe why it strikes me is I remember reading an article, I can't remember when, and it was, I think it was from Little Falls, you know, northern Minnesota, where, where these things really start to blow apart is when some resident usually or some business decides, I don't care, I'm doing this.
Mm-hmm.
And this one woman had just littered her yard with signs, just all kinds of them about various things. And, you know, the city came, no, can't do that. And she just fought it all the way to the Supreme Court of Minnesota. Won, of course, because the code wasn't defensible. And it's one of those, wow, that's where you don't want to find yourself, is facing somebody who decides, no, you can't tell me what to do because you're actually wrong. So, that's why I think it's worth the effort to get it right, and also because maybe we could be a little more creative, allow a little more creativity, particularly for our businesses, because hopefully we'll get a different mix than maybe we've had in a while. So, that's my take, anyway.
Well, I appreciate the conversation. That's the input we needed, but I guess one last call. Anybody have anything they want to, they want to add to the discussion? Okay, if not?
Just thanks. Good luck. All righty, then, on to old business we have, and on any other reports from staff?
I don't have a report, but I do have a comment to make. And as you know, Elaine, I forwarded the wayfinding plan.
Oh, yeah.
To you. So, I just wanted to bring up the idea of moving forward, making sure, even though that hasn't been adopted formally by the council, I know it had been proposed, but there were some things in there that they weren't comfortable with in moving that forward. But I think that needs to go to council again for reevaluation. So, I know that there's a lot of visuals in that, and would, what is being proposed, would that align with what the new ordinances would be?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. I hadn't read through the whole thing, but I do know that a big part of that was just, you know, brand, a part of branding the city, but a part of that was also consistency and uniformity.
Yes.
And the term uniformity, from a sign perspective, you know, that can mean a lot of different things. So, I think that it's something that has some merit in what it was intending to do. I think the big issue, though, if I recall, really was investing that, the amount of money that was involved.
It was, it was.
It wasn't so much the concept of the wayfinding, you know, having a system to get people around the city. It was more at that time, just the, the total cost involved, if I, I think.
It was, it was. That's why it was not, there wasn't a resolution made on it. The Park and Rec Commission, this is also a conversation with them, and they're insisting that the signs that they're implementing in the parks match what's on that plan. And so, I don't know if that is, as far as the freestanding or if there's any awnings or projected signs.
I don't know. That, quite honestly, you know, like I say, I didn't read through the whole thing, but I, I don't, I think it was primarily street signage and guidance.
Okay.
Signage.
So, not-
It wasn't necessarily park signs, which to me, I don't know, I have mixed feelings about that. I don't know that they need to be uniform. I mean, maybe some people feel really strongly, well, I like this look in my, you know, in my park.
Yeah, the Park Commission, I think, does feel strongly that it should.
No, I'm just saying, I don't know that the neighborhoods feel strongly about that. That was not a part, I don't think, of the wayfinding plan. That was the point I was making.
Okay.
I think of my little neighborhood where Colby Hills, it was the, Colby Hills neighborhood, I mean, the land was donated and there's a group that ran it, the park, for many years, and they're still active. And, you know, we want this, we know we don't want that. So, I always think of them when I think about uniformity.
Sure.
Signs don't get updated very often because they all look like they're from the 60s.
They do.
Yes.
But, you know, actually, they're weathered and kind of, kind of match the city in a way, but-
Well, they will be replaced. It is in the plan. One other thing that I just wanted to mention as you're making your decision, we did recently get an application for signage on the new anchor storage facility. And they're, they're saying that the one side of the building, they're, they're losing a big potential for advertising on there. So, they're applying for additional signage. So, I don't know if that should be taken into consideration going forward, if a corner building might be allotted more signage or anything along those lines, if they're going to be limited to the same amount that what you would see as you're driving by just on the front of a building.
Yeah, got, got-
Just some information I wanted to say with you.
And then, a couple of updates I have just would be on a couple of, you know, planning applications that you have recently reviewed. We have part of Shifsky's permit, meaning mostly the exterior improvements and the improvements along the public right away, but we're still waiting on the, the permit regarding the silos. So, it'll still be probably a couple of weeks. Makes sense, they're, they're not going to install the new silos until, you know, their, their asphalt business is done for the season. But we should have updates about that definitely at the next meeting.
I might buy there. Yesterday, it looked like they had the silos sitting in, in kind of storage in the area.
Yes, but they have not applied for the foundation permit or the electrical work or anything like that to actually install them there. You know, we, we know they're prepping, we're having conversations with them, but it's not imminent that they're, they're going to be going up. North High School's kind of in the same, same boat. We're having discussions with their architects and, and, you know, there's a different level of, of plans that are needed for the building permit, but we don't anticipate activity, you know, in the next couple of weeks on that. And then, the, well, the last two things are, we, we don't currently have any applications in for, you know, items that would require public hearings. Of course, that could always change in, in a day, but we're pretty good on that for now. And then, the last thing would be, even though we kind of mentioned it through the meeting, but the task force will be meeting on Monday, October 25th. And one of the things we will do is add on the agenda, or reports from, from that task force on our planning commission meeting agenda, so the, the task force members can, can provide us an update.
Good.
And maybe, maybe this is not the appropriate time, but there was an application where you had commented that two variances or a COP would be required, and he never responded. So, I don't know if that's still in the works.
He, he responded that his, his architect and surveyor are working on it, but he did not provide any, any indication on the timeline on when he's going to submit it.
Well, it's nice to have time for kind of workshop items, you know, usually if, when we have public hearings, the time just, nobody feels like spending too much time thinking about anything else after them. Okay, thank you. Reports from council liaison.
Sure, yeah. The work that you all did around North High was approved by council. I received a few comments in regards to transportation issues around the Richardson School, and I'm not sure, because it's on a county road and the school district is involved, what that planning would look like or what that conversation will look like. But there is concern, I do see that there is a crossing guard added, but there's been, you know, conversation about how that's a concern. The Arts and Culture Commission is interested in meeting with the Planning Commission and also other commissions to kind of work collaboratively. I think that there will be a lot of opportunities there. And then, in terms of any other updates that I have, just kind of your standard, we got two new restaurants, like you had visited. There's also a tattoo shop coming into town, so downtown is changing some.
A tattoo shop?
A tattoo shop, and apparently the artist is, is amazing. So, if you're looking for a tattoo, Vice Chair Mongi, there you go.
One I'm not going to pick. Yeah, there you go.
Vice.
Just going to say.
And then, of course, Booyah is this weekend, so.
What was the name of the, the two restaurants? I know one of them was Brothers, is that correct?
Brothers, and you went there, I think. Brothers Bistro, and I highly recommend it. I went there for lunch and it was amazing. Cool.
That's the old subway.
It is.
Okay. Any other one is?
The other one is Mel's and is still in the works, but I think they'll be moving forward.
Is that going to be in the new building?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. That's the one, no, that's the one that's going to be named Max.
Max, sorry. Mel's Max, sorry.
Max is dying.
Sorry.
I caught the tail end of that when I got here, then we're just closing up.
Yeah. Which, I mean, that's a nice touch.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, any other questions of our council liaison? Not then, on to reports from commissioners. Rick?
Well, from Silver Lake Improvement Association, we discovered that there's a new invasive plant for our lake. It's purple loo strife, you know, you've probably all heard about it and probably seen beautiful waves of, of purple fields. It, it quickly populates. I think last year, we, we attempted to, to kill it off by uprooting it, and I think there were like eight or nine sightings around the lake. And this year, there were about 25 or 30 sightings of where it was, and we organized a, a treatment of all the sites that we're able to identify around the lake on public land. And so, we're hopeful that we'll be able to manage that on the lake. It could really change the landscape pretty drastically if it's not controlled. And, you know, we moved ahead and, and addressed that. And then, as I think was hinted at, the, the first redevelopment master plan meeting is going to be on the 25th of this month, so.
Okay. Thanks. John?
Covered the one 25th, we're good.
Oh, okay.
The 25th.
Andrew?
I have nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Eric?
I pass as well. Thank you.
Okay. Speaking of meetings, the, the joint EDA meeting is the 21st, is that correct? Of this month, I think I remember that date.
Yes.
So, do you all have any topics that you want added to that agenda? But I taught, I mean, I was asked if I had any, and I thought, well, first off, I'll find out if you all have any rather than come up with them myself. If not, I can probably scratch up one or two.
Would it be too soon to start talking about signs with them?
I think probably so, since we don't even have a sense of-
Yeah, okay.
Exactly-
Thought so, I was just-
Where we're headed.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think you're right. I'm just, since we're discussing anyway, I just thought, like, I know, Andrew, you'd mentioned that that might be a good audience, but maybe it's just too soon. Thank you.
Yeah, it's probably confusing enough where we are right now.
Well, I, yeah, I think that would probably fall on the agenda as an update, you know, to- as an update, you know, topic to be discussed later. But, yeah, we won't have anything substantial to present.
Yeah. Okay. All righty. And then, just a question. Do you know when the QuickTrip is opening? They are really, they look awfully close to me.
Probably don't have employees. That's probably why it's holding back. It looks like you're getting ready to rock pretty quick.
Same observation. I don't know when.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe somebody had some kind of update. I'll be able to tell probably the minute they're open because the parking lot will be full.
Elaine, regarding the joint meeting, I have a note from a while ago, something along the lines of the parking study. So I didn't know if you wanted that on the agenda or if that's something that at a later date.
I thought that was maybe something that was going to be part of the discussion that the task force was going to be having.
That's how I recall that discussion as well.
Yeah.
The redevelopment master plan?
Yeah. It might, you know, it might not be on its own a parking study. But I know we, my recollection was we talked about parking and then specifically not just automobile parking. And that needs to be a discussion item for the task force with the redevelopment.
You kind of get just into slightly different take on redeveloping the downtown. Once you get some big development like that, it's more tweaking almost is maybe what you could call it.
So our parking, the parking lots that are public are the one back here, the one behind J and K. Is there anything down? I know there's one building that's, that's torn, that's an open spot. I believe that's the official parking spot.
I was, well, I know there's area like behind, you know, the Deuce Building on the end. But I always thought that was almost like an extension of the, what I call the K and J parking lot. I mean, it extends that entire block virtually, just different configuration as you go.
Just trying to see where all, because, you know, over here, there was some parking across the street where the construction, is that going to be an official parking lot again for the city?
I don't believe so. I can double check that, but...
I haven't heard of that. I do know of a public parking behind, I think it's Sandburg's Mortuary. I know it's not right downtown, but sometimes people will park there.
That is a city lot.
That is a city lot.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to kind of visualize where all these are because some of them don't look like they're official lots, so.
That one actually has a sign, that's why I know.
But you know what? Now that I think about it, not, not so much related to our zoning code, but the concept of signage downtown. You know, again, the look, that might be something that would come up on, during the task force as well as we're talking about that whole thing. Because, again, right now, the downtown design manual is what we have. And that actually, sign code gets updated, then that manual probably needs to get updated after it. But that was my only thing, so there's, nobody has anything else? Patrick? Oh, I'm sorry, I, you know, Patrick, do you have anything?
You answered my question. I was trying to remember if I had the EDA meeting on my calendar. And I do...
Okay. 21st.
Yes, and we have...
Thank you.
We have John Mongi and Mr. Gelbman on the commission.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Committee.
Committee.
Careful.
Committee.
They'll have to do work. Task force, yes. All right. As long as there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Rick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. We're adjourned at 9:24.